Welcome to the Township of Howell Township Planning Board meeting for Thursday, May 18th. Aline, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6th, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 6th, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6th, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Roll call, please.
The former Mayor Goddard's been excused. Mr. Husser is going to be late. Chief Kudrick?
Present.
Mr. Nash, I have not heard from. Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse is going to be late. Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Here.
And Chairman Schneider.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to recognize our troops, wherever they are, our first responders, and our police that are protecting us every day.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes of our regular meeting for March 16th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2017.
The eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, French, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself. Roll call, please.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Aline, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. I have a letter from Robert Munoz. He is the attorney for Gutierrez Properties LLC. There are actually two applications on this evening's agenda for submission waivers. The first one is the White Oak Property, Lot 20.01, and he would like to withdraw this application, and he is going to abandon the project and return the property to farming. They are working with the DEP to make all arrangements, so they are withdrawing that application. On the second property, which is known as Daisy 2101, he also gave me a letter, and for this one, he asked that the application be placed on hold pending an application to the zoning board of adjustment for an interpretation of the pre-existing non-conforming use at this site to determine whether or not a site plan is necessary for the intended use of the property. So they will not be here this evening either. And the third letter I have is from Jan Wooters, the attorney for SL Homes, and this one here, he is asking that the application of SL Homes be carried tonight to the board's June 15th meeting, and he also granted an extension of time to July 31st, 2017, to act on the application.
Mr. Chair, if that's okay, I'll just carry the SL Homes notice. Aline, you said June 15th?
Yes, I wrote it 15th.
The application of SL Homes Inc., SP-1013, be carried to the board's June 15th, 2017 meeting, 7:00 here in the main meeting room. There will be no further notice to property owners, so if you received a notice for SL Homes previously, you will not receive another in the mail.
And that's it on correspondence, other than what was sent to the members by email.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one other item before we get started. I just want to recommend to the board that the master plan hearing for the parks, recreation, and open space element be carried to a subsequent meeting. I've received several comments from the Environmental Commission, as well as the Lake Restoration and Wildlife Management Committee, and I got an email late this afternoon saying that they would like some additional time to review and give some comments. I think it's important that we allow them the time they need to review and give us as many comments as they can, so that we can go back to the subcommittee, the master plan subcommittee, look through them, incorporate those that need to be incorporated, so that we don't wind up adopting something tonight and then having to amend it in very short order. There's no urgency with this element, and I think it's important to make sure that all the relevant committees within the township, you know, get their opportunity to participate in the process.
Absolutely, I occur. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we just need to carry the notice on that. I think to give everybody enough time, I think the 15th is probably a good day for that, June 15th. So, the master plan hearing to amend the parks, recreation, open space element of the master plan will be carried to the board's June 15th, 2017 meeting, 7:00 here in the main meeting room. There will be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you. We have two resolutions that need to be memorialized. First one is case number SP 1032, Brian Hagerty. Resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Who was the first one? I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
The other resolution is case number SP 1020A, Wawa Incorporated. Resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself.
I'll make a motion to memorialize the Wawa.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
We have a submission waiver, case number SP 1008A, Lion Holdings LLC. It's amended preliminary and final major site plan and ancillary bulk variances. Application of Lion Holdings LLC as applicant and owner seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance approval to construct a two-story, 3,864-square-foot medical office with site improvements, including parking, on premises known as Block 48, Lots 1 and 3, at the corner of Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, County Route 547, and Alair Road, which is County Ripe Road 524. Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Williams here for Mayor LaFrance and Williams. Tonight, I am replacing Todd Cohen, who is in a better place, I'm sure.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to jump in on the submission waivers?
Yes.
As you may or may not recall, this application was granted approval in 2015, so this is an amended application from only a couple of years ago. They're requesting three checklist waivers. Checklist item number 17, written descriptions, including meets and bounds for all easements, covenants, and deed restrictions. Checklist item number 60, 2,000-foot drainage, downstream drainage analysis, and checklist item number 52, uses on all lots within 200 feet. All this information, my office already has. They submitted it with their prior application, so we would take no exception to granting of the waiver for purposes of completeness. And we, if, if the information that we've received from a couple of years ago proves to be outdated during the course of the hearing, we would just request at that point in time that whatever information be provided.
And of course, we would.
But I take no exception to the granting of those waivers.
Okay, thank you. If there are no comments from the board, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission waiver for Lion Holdings LLC, SP 1008A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you, Counselor.
Same here. Go home.
Hey, Mr. Chair, just for purposes of the record, Mr. Nash has now arrived. The next items we have on the agenda are the reexamination of the master plan, as well as proposed amendments to the land use element of the master plan. And just briefly, the municipal master plan is required to be reexamined at least every 10 years. We're not at that point yet, but you can do it as many times as you want, as long as it doesn't, you know, you do it within the 10 years. So it's a healthy exercise, particularly in a, you know, growing, dynamic town like Howell, that we do it often to make sure that the policies that we, you know, are operating under remain current and reflect what our current goals are. So that is sort of a series of questions that the board has to answer. And pursuant to that reexamination, we also have some specific recommendations for amendments to the municipal master plan. So Jen will go through sort of the highlights of those. The board can certainly ask questions. I think it's probably appropriate, after Jen goes through it, to have our chair of the master plan subcommittee, Mr. Russo, to sort of go through the, you know, what the recommendations are that Jen has outlined, particularly since it's under his guidance and leadership, that we've gotten from, you know, ground zero to this level.
Well, I'd want, oh.
Go ahead.
One second. Well, I just wanted to, first of all, I want to thank our two board members, Mr. Nash, Mr. Tannenhouse, who is not here, and the professionals for taking the time out to work with us. Worked for the last couple of months handling the open space and parks recreation element, which is a work in progress, but we're happy to present it. We noticed a number of items in the ordinance. Looking to reconcile, so that we're, you know, working closely with community development and coming up with recommendations regarding definition changes. That's what we really mostly worked on, and under the guidance from our professionals, it got done. We did have representatives from the Lake Restoration and Wildlife Commission come at our last meeting, and they provided some helpful comments as well. And with that...
Thank you, Jen.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
It is.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Jennifer Beame, B-E-A-H-M.
And your position with the board?
I am the board planner.
Okay.
So I think Mr. Cuchero and then Mr. Russo has kind of given a good intro into this, and I'm going to talk about the reexamination report and the land use element amendment at the same time, because generally, they make the same recommendations. As you know, we have had a number of cases come before us, as well as before the zoning board, and there are definitely some holes in our ordinance that need to be plugged up. There's some definitions that we don't have that needed to be incorporated, you know, for example, shopping center. We don't really define what a shopping center is. And then there are also some definitions that we currently have that we felt needed to be cleaned up a little bit. They were a little vague or had some questionable language, so we incorporated revised definitions within this, both these documents, as well as making recommendations for zoning districts that said uses would be allowed to be developed in as of right. There are a couple of items that I think warrant some further discussion from the board. First and foremost, there was a recommendation, and I think this came from the zoning board's annual report, which had input from community development regarding our requirements in the ordinance to have 40,000 square foot minimum for properties that have septic systems. You know, typically, the Board of Health is the entity that is responsible for inspecting and approving a septic system, and we've had in the past year or two, a couple of applications that are in the area out, out past Farmingdale by, you know, Eagle Oaks Golf Course, where the lots are smaller. They're about 30,000 square feet, and there is no sewer in that area. So there was some, a lot of discussion on some of the subdivisions that we've seen over the course of the past year as to whether or not that requirement needs to remain. So we incorporated it as a recommendation, but I definitely feel like it's something that the board should discuss as to what their feelings are with respect to that requirement, and then we would take direction from you.
That, as Jen said, that recommendation, you know, is primarily generated by community development here in Town Hall. I think it comes down to a matter of policy for the board. I don't know that, I don't think it's unlawful, you know, or entirely preempted by, by other statutes or by the role of the county health board. I think they can coexist and complement each other. We certainly, I don't think the ordinance overreaches to take away any jurisdiction. It just establishes, you know, some municipal rules. Further, if the applicant goes to the county first and gets an approval from the county, I think that probably, that satisfies our ordinance. So it's also just a matter of sequencing for an applicant if they want to, you know, how they want to approach satisfaction of the condition. So it's really, it's up to the board as a matter of policy to keep what we have or to go with the recommendation, but I, I'm not going to tell you like you have to do it, because I feel that, you know, from a legal perspective, we've been preempted.
Is there any input? Did you ask the county board of health what's...
They, they, the answer is we didn't, because they wouldn't issue us any guidance anyway. They're, they know what their jurisdiction is. They're not going to tell us, you know, how to, how to draft our ordinance, as long as we don't, we're not preventing them from granting approvals or denials. That's all they care about.
Okay.
You want to have that discussion now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. My recommendation is that we leave it, and here's the reason why. When it gives the board, the health department, I think, a better eyes to look at some of these projects that come, that don't meet this requirement. And if you recall, we had an application that was here that was looking to put 10 pounds in a five-pound sack, and that was one of the things that we were able to negotiate to lessen the impact of that project. So I'm not a big fan of taking any control or jurisdiction away from this board. There's a process that the applicants can go through to see fit if they want, and not, you know, request that, that relief, but I don't think that's something that we, as a town, should give up. So that's my input.
Does anybody feel differently? I mean, I'm trying to...
I can occur with the deputy mayor. Does anybody else have any input?
I agree with what Deputy Mayor said. You know, there are methods by which these things can be approved, so rather than give a blanket thing, I'm fine with, agree with, totally with what he said.
I agree.
So that's a recommendation that we'll remove from both the reexamination report and the land use plan amendment, obviously, prior to voting on it. So we'll just remove that recommendation. That just will remain as is, as requiring a 40,000 square foot lot. The other item that I think warrants some conversation is there's been a lot of discussion regarding manufacturing uses within our SED Special Economic District zone. Right now, manufacturing is permitted, and there's identified a number of manufacturing, specific manufacturing exercises that are allowed in that zone, and there was a recommendation to remove manufacturing in total. You know, my goal in including this within the reexam and this land use plan amendment was to facilitate conversation here at the board regarding this item, because I don't necessarily know, you know, the SED zone is throughout the town. There's sections, almost in every section of town. There's down along the southern border, they, you know, there's sections out by wall, there's sections in, you know, close to freehold, so it's not a small area that we have in town that is, is zoned SED, and, and removing it in its entirety could cause problems in creating a lot of non-conforming uses within those zones throughout the town. So I felt that it was important to include, just so that we could have a conversation, I could get the feedback from the board, and then we could either remove the, remove the recommendation or modify the recommendation pursuant to how the board feels about that issue.
Mr. Chair, and just to be a little more specific, it came up more particularly in the, the volume of applications that we've received for sort of heavy manufacturing use, like the manufacturing of concrete and asphalt, and it's more confined to a particular area of the, of the SED zone. Those particular uses have some uniqueness to it in terms of the noxious odors and sounds and, and things like that that are associated with it. That's sort of where the issue generated from, and Jen's right. We went broad in this to see whether the board wanted to pare it down, leave it, leave it broad. It will create non-conforming uses either way, but certainly, a complete ban would create more, and I think the board needs to discuss amongst itself whether there are other types of manufacturing uses which prevent, or which present similar issues of nuisance, you know, to, to surrounding neighbors. So, you know, we leave that as sort of an open discussion item for the board. You want to go very narrow and really talk about what generated the conversation, which was the concrete and asphalt, or do you want to go more broadly, because maybe there are other types of uses that present similar problems?
Deputy Mayor?
Anybody else want to go first, though?
Well, yeah, if, you know, when, when we were discussing this, we noted that the SED zone in, in general, most of it, is located along our major corridors, where we would want to facilitate this type of growth. So that's why we thought it was positive to have that in there.
So my thoughts, so obviously, I would not want to see that we remove all manufacturing out of the SED, because obviously, the SED zone was created for the economic development. I think what came up with the asphalt and concrete is typically, you see these manufacturing plants in rural suburban communities like ours, and we have our fair share. We have, I think, three. This was brought to the governing body's attention through Titten Falls, and with the concerns of the environmental impact that these heavy manufacturing bring to the town with the amount that we have, how many do we want to see in Howell? So I think that's why the recommendation was geared towards this particular facility, as we would look into other heavy industrial manufacturing that we have in Howell that have, some would say, negative impact on the surrounding communities. So it's not like we, we do not have these. It's the question of how many more do we want? We all know Howell is a target because of the amount of land that it has, and by far, these particular manufacturing do have an impact on our community. So I do not recommend that we remove manufacturing as a whole, but in this particular use, that it be removed, the asphalt and cement.
I feel the same way, because of the effects that these types of plants have on the surrounding community. It's not, we have enough. I don't think we need anymore.
Yeah. And as Mr. Nash noted, where these particular SED zones, you know, you're dealing with heavy trucks. A lot of these roads unfortunately can't support this, and, you know, I think when the zone was set up, there was definitely positive, you know, things about it, one being the economic development for the town, but we, we may have overlooked some of the uses that we allowed in there that are having a negative impact on our community.
You know, not only asphalt and concrete, we have some national companies that are looking to settle in our SED zones that distribute nationwide and bring a lot of truck traffic. Now, how do we address the kind of facility that may be a national company, that's distributing throughout the tri-state area or further, and bringing all this truck traffic back and forth in rural areas and SED zones? And that, that's a concern of mine.
Well, I mean, that particular issue wasn't the driving factor here. It was a factor, but it wasn't necessarily the driving factor. Issues of traffic, we have to look at it more closely, because I don't know that we're looking to exclude like warehouses, you know, and things like that that necessarily generate traffic. It may be that we look to, we'd have to take a look at identifying more precisely, you know, what those types of uses are that are generating the traffic.
You take a warehouse and put it in a rural community, an SED zone, with all that kind of distribution traffic, that could be a major problem.
That's a fundamental question as to whether you even want an SED zone, because the types of uses that we're permitting there, forget about the asphalt and the concrete, they generate, you know, that kind of traffic at, at those levels. So I think that's more an issue of deciding, you know, whether we want to do a more, you know, substantive revision of the SED zone, and, you know, maybe... The roads in that area, are they local, county?
It depends on where we are in town. Some of them are located on county roads. Some of them are located on local streets which feed out into either a county or a state highway.
We, we have to look at the type of road network that's there to also see, maybe we can put some limitations, you know, on the, the type of vehicle that can, that can traverse.
I mean, we can put into this document just a general recommendation to review and evaluate the SED zoning, which would give us the, the impetus to look in that further.
Like that's...
I mean, aside from the removal of the concrete and the asphalt manufacturing, which would be a separate recommendation, we could add a recommendation to review and evaluate the SED zoning throughout the township, because there may be areas that could sustain something like that, and then other areas that are currently zoned SED that maybe we want to discourage that particular type of warehouse distribution facility. We would have to just look at where they are, what roads they feed out onto, and what's around it.
Yeah, I think the other thing that's useful to understand here, and why we have some of the challenges in the SED zone, comes from sort of the encroachment of residential into the vicinity of the SED zone, and, you know, Equestria in particular is there because the township was sued. The township was sued, it lost, and the Equestria development was forced upon the municipality. And that's, that's in the past, and, you know, you can't go back. You have to deal with what's there now. So that drives some of the, you know, the reevaluation of how the SED zone works, because there has been some, some development in Howell that wasn't pursuant to our planning. It was pursuant to litigation.
One of the items and one of the discussions that we did have is kind of what I'm hearing from everyone, is that possibly taking the SED and making it several different types of SED zones. One of the concerns that we did have is that, yes, we, the asphalt and concrete plants are clustered in one area. If we remove that, even if they come in with a slight modification to modify a driveway or something like that, they are now a non-conforming use. Am I correct?
Yes.
Right? So I guess I would look at that maybe we should go back and look at subdividing the SED into several different types, using the criteria, roadway network, proximity to residential zones, and so on, to make that determination.
And I think putting in a recommendation to review that SED zone would enable us to do just that.
Agreed.
Those are really the only two big-ticket items that I felt warranted further discussion. The balance were just cleanup on definitions, and if you guys had any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. What's the difference between entertainment uses and indoor recreation?
Well, indoor... Well, indoor rec is really kind of a new booming use category. You know, you see a lot of buildings existing, whether it's either in a strip center or it's in an industrial area where it's a warehouse that hasn't been utilized, converted into like those trampoline parks and things like that, which is really recreation driven whereas entertainment could be a little broader. So.
I don't know how many of you are familiar in Freehold Borough. They have that, I think it's called the Amazing Escape Room. You, you, basically you go in and you're, there are different rooms and you have to.
Locked in and you have to get out.
Right. That's like an entertainment use. You know, rather than you go, you're going inside a building and there's indoor soccer fields and basketball courts and stuff like that, which is, you know, ice hockey, which, which are like your recreational uses.
The only question I have is like under the entertainment uses, and I don't know if it's possible to define it anymore, but I mean, it just seems so broad that I wonder if someone under that could bring something in that later we go, oh my goodness, why do we allow this?
Well, it's different than adult entertainment. I will say that, you know, at the outset. The problem with hyper-defining something is that our ordinances and our master plan and those of any municipality are never able to keep pace with technology, new trends and things like that. And if you don't allow an ordinance to grow with the times, you, you thrust a lot of stuff into non-compliance that we didn't intend to be non-compliant.
I just worry the other way that.
Right.
Something could get in there that you go, why did we allow this? You know? I couldn't think of an example I've had.
Well, you know, and, and sometimes that happens and, and that generates a change. But it's difficult. You can never come up with the exhaustive list, but what you can be certain of is that things you never thought of, you know, will, will, you know, will make its way in there.
So Jen, let me, I'm sorry, Ron. So we're, we're identifying recreation, indoor recreation and entertainment. And Keith, you might be able to help me. What's the name of the place online?
Gamechanger?
Is that it?
The one across from Woolies?
Yeah.
Yeah, Gamechanger World.
Which is, which has been some problems for the town. It's been problematic for the town. It's a, I guess they do bands and.
They, they host a variety of, of indoor entertainment from, from bands to video game championships.
Well, the bands and things like that, I would say is not entertainment, more a nightclub, I think. But we could work something in to the definition.
Yeah, but how do we present it, prevent it to, from going into an SED, SED zone?
Well, it only is allowing it in the HD1, HC and PMU zones.
Right.
So it's not permitted in an, in a SED zone.
So what, what's the zones for entertainment?
HD1, HC, PMU.
I think one of the problems too with that is like, I know that with that game changer thing, there's a problem with parking because the people.
Well, it does say here too, it recommends establishing parking standards for these uses. Because a lot of times those uses come in and we don't have parking standards in our ordinance for them because we didn't anticipate them. So for both, there was a recommendation to incorporate parking standards into the zoning.
And I think also it's important to understand the role of the master plan in the process. The master plan is not an ordinance. The master plan is a policy document that in broad terms recommends certain types of uses in certain zones. A lot of this, the next step will be the introduction of an ordinance, which gets very specific as to standards of parking, you know, lot coverage, height, you know, all, all of those things. But, you know, this is a more general policy document. The ordinance that comes will have like a lot of what you're talking about.
Because I, I know that the, the people in that senior housing right next to it complain that the people, those people, there's so many that they end up parking in their facility and cause problems.
Anything else?
Just one other thing, Jen. By way of an example of uses that didn't used to exist or were not customary, what this recommendation does also, sort of a new kind of use that we're seeing, and I, I did one of these in Freehold Borough where I'm the, the board attorney there, is it's kind of an educational slash like brewery type of use where it's not particularly a microbrewery per se, but it's a, it's a use where people come in and learn how to, to make their own product. And it's sort of educational, but it's, it straddles the world of educational and, and like a microbrewery. So we've included that, you know, because that's a type of use that we think, you know, is something that we shouldn't prohibit in certain zones. But it really, if you look at our current ordinances, it wasn't permitted. And that's because it's just something no one could have really thought of the last time that we did this exercise.
Who thought the gas stations could end up being food places?
Exactly. Or, you know, back in the 1980s, no one would have thought about cell towers. Yeah, things, things like that.
That was the only questions I had.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is this a good time to open this to the public?
Well, I'd say if, if the board members have any more questions, we could field those. And then if not, yeah, absolutely, open it to the public.
Gentlemen, any more comment? I was saying none. I'll no, open this to the public for any comments on the master plan hearing, the reexamination report. Do you have any comments? Please come up. Seeing none, close the public portion.
So then I would just put it to the board to.
Yeah, it's just a motion to approve the reexamination report and the amendment to the land use element, including those modifications that you've directed tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I'll second it. Roll call please.
That was Mr. Nash and Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Next we have the master plan hearing.
Nope, nope. That's done.
We did everything.
Right now we need a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Okay.
Okay.